All right, welcome everybody to the 4:00 PM joint work session of the Ogden City Council, also acting as the redevelopment agency of December 3rd, 2024. And all council members slash board members are present. We'll first start off with a quick review of the day and the agenda. Our work session, we plan to go till about 5:15. And then we'll break to go down for the ribbon cutting for the giving machine, which is just down in the amphitheater here. So for our meetings this evening, we've got the 6:00 PM city council meeting. Well, we have a few acknowledgements. The Ogden Community Engagement Opportunity Commission, Commissioner Fernando Morales will present on, is that on both of those? Or no, that's just on both of those, right? Okay. And then we also have a recognition for the onstage Ogden. Angela's reading that. And then we have consent items for the planning commission to some reappointments and an appointment. Landmarks Commission appointment or reappointment. Yeah. And then we've got a public hearing on the budget amendment for some mid-year adjustments. And we had that work session item last week on more detail on that. So then we'll have a report from the planning commission on proposed rezon for 340 Washington Boulevard. And then let's see, we won't have the report from administration. We had an amended agenda here. And then the last item would be some new business proposed resolution regarding the Weber Housing Authority to exercise its powers in Ogden City. After that, we'll have public comments. And that will be our city council meeting. Any questions or discussion on that? Any clarification? We'll then reset for the special redevelopment agency meeting where we will have just the public hearing on the proposed budget amendments for fiscal year 2024, 25. Mid-year adjustments.
And Chair, I was just gonna say, we had to, when we moved all of the other items off of the agenda, redevelopment agent, agency agenda, we had to leave this one here because it had been noticed as a public hearing for tonight. So you can hold your public hearing, but you can continue it till next week is which is where we've moved the other Forest Service building items. Because I think you'll want to consider them together, just because if you don't decide to purchase the building, there's no need to do the budget amendment, approve the budget amendment. So that's what we would recommend to staff.
Sound good. All right, so have the hearing and then motion to table it to the next week. Or yeah, that's not the right word, table. Continue it. Okay. All right, with that, we will start our work session and invite for the general plan update, Kristi Brown. Come up and oh yeah, Brandon, if you'll just introduce Kristi and we'll go there.
Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about the general plan. This is Kristy Ostoma-Brown, and she's one of our consultants for the Plan Ogden project. And we also have Megan Moore, who's with us. And she's with Logan Simpson, who's also part of our consultant group. So we're excited to share with you where we're at in the project and get some of your input on where we're headed. So I'll turn the time over to Kristi. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll just roll my way over here. All right, and I'm gonna just make this screen a touch bigger so that I can read the slides too, if that's okay. I think I, I think I can do it. We're good. Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so I recognize a lot of you from public meetings before. And we of course checked in with you at the start of the process. So this is just an update on the visioning part of the general plan effort. And it's really been the focus of our year since we started the project back in, I think, March. So I'm gonna dive in, I'm gonna blast through a whole bunch of slides. If you'd like to, if you have a question, feel free to interrupt, but otherwise I'll loop back at the end and see what you're thinking. Anyway, just a reminder on what we committed to when we, when we unfolded the visioning effort. First of all, a public process, we want to provide research and information to the public. We want to seek broad input throughout the process. And then we want to build vision directly from that feedback. We want to be transparent throughout, so there's a clear nexus to the public between what they say at one meeting and what we bring back at the next meeting. And we really think that that process builds momentum for implementation because it ends up being a shared vision, a shared community set of goals. We also committed to a scenarios process. So we're exploring the choices we could make today, looking out to 2050 and looking at their long-term consequences. What are the metrics involved? So we developed a trend scenario at the beginning of the process. And then there are scenarios created with ideas from the public. And this is what that visioning process looks like. We start with a brainstorming phase, we move into a scenario evaluation. We're kind of in between that and looking toward our vision celebration, where we pivot to actual implementation, the general plan, the first step. So at that first workshop and surrounding events, there were 39 maps created by small groups of the public. And we asked those small groups to present their ideas at the end of each workshop meeting. And we learned a lot about common goals, common ideas that appeared over and over again across the maps. And that enabled us to create three different scenarios based on those, those common public sentiments. I won't spend much time here, but you can study these in more detail on the website if you'd like. The first scenario was livable neighborhoods, which focused on a high degree of neighborhood infill citywide with neighborhood centers walkable to most households. And then complementing that with complete streets. So people could get around the city more easily by walking, by biking. And then those major corridors, you see in the orange there, they're very small and hard to see, but strategically locating some more residential on corridors that are pedestrian and bike friendly. So it's a nice inviting space for people who reside on those corridors to live and focus on ownership options in this, in this case. So lots of townhomes, small family cottage lots or small lots. That's kind of the bent of the first scenario. The second one focuses not at all on neighborhood infill, but rather on corridor development. And that's a lot of for rental, right along the city's major corridors as a way of accommodating most of the projected population. That's complemented by expanded bus lines, perhaps OGX or enhanced bus in another way as a means of addressing the population that we expect to have. Then scenario three, we call vibrant downtown. And that's one where we have kind of a middle amount of neighborhood infill citywide. We expand the downtown quite a bit, including a lot of new housing, transitioning from that downtown core into neighborhoods. And then the existing corridors, they're commercial now, they just remain commercial. This one also has a lot of additional jobs, both downtown and in industrial manufacturing areas. So that's the nutshell. So then we ask people at workshops, what do you think? What do you think of the pieces, the components of these scenarios? And I'm gonna show you about half of the results tonight. The full results will be online shortly, if you'd like to see those, or Brandon can send the full presentation. But just hit some highlights. In terms of demographics, this is a slide from one of the workshops, really good representation citywide. We were happy about that. Had, I think, about 200 people at that first workshop, so that was good. The second one, about that same number. And good age spread. And then also good race and ethnicity spread, about three quarters of people identified as white, but about a quarter identified as something else or white and something else. On housing, we asked which approach to creating new housing is best for Ogden's future? And people really centered around those that, that takes ownership and rental opportunities, either downtown or more ownership opportunities primarily through neighborhood infill. That's where the most interest lied. Not a lot of interest in corridor development, providing more rental identity or significantly more. How important are programs to support improvements to existing homes? Very important or important? When we look at economy and household sustaining jobs? We asked about downtowns. Either like to see continuing growing downtown, much like it has been growing, but there is also a fair amount of interest in being even more intensive in terms of office jobs and employment and housing in the downtown area. What approach to accessing restaurant shopping and services do you prefer? People would really like to access those services on foot in a neighborhood center. Yeah. You bet. All right, are we good to go?
For those online, we're just trying to identify some tech issues here where the presentation keeps flickering. So Brandon's gonna go under the table. Sorry about that.
The deep dive.
So we have a possible connection issue, which is giving the flickering and also maybe the mic acting up a little bit, so. It looks good right now. You just lay there the rest of the meeting, then. Okay. Go ahead, Kristi.
Okay, way to take one for the team. All right, so moving on, we asked about jobs. What types of jobs does Ogden need in the future? And it's really interesting that only 8% of people said maintain that current level of job growth. More people said substantially more jobs, mostly in terms of office jobs downtown and in industrial and manufacturing areas. So really wanting those, those households sustaining jobs. And then we looked at transportation. Couple of points here. We asked about the approach to the city's transportation corridors and what's best. People would really like to prioritize strong active transportation, so the ability to walk and bike safely on those major streets. But that's not at the expense of transit. The next question, when we ask about the approach to transit improvements, only 7% of people said no further improvements needed. People really would like to see improvements, whether better connecting people to job centers or better connecting people to, from their neighborhoods to other places in the city. On the recreation side, I won't spend too much time here, but we asked about neighborhood parks. There were a lot of comments about that in the first workshop. And it, it looks like they could check all that apply, and they pretty much did. Would really like to see improvements to existing parks, whether that's adding shade or safety, new activities, more maintenance. And then we asked about downtown amenities. And people could check all that apply. So the most often checked was destination events and spaces, probably no surprise there, but also a lot of support for trails that connect downtown to area amenities and also mid-block pedestrian and bike-only streets and pathways and plazas to really knit that space together from a pedestrian standpoint. How important are bicycle and pedestrian trails that connect to regional amenities? This is a little bit like the downtown question, but this is citywide. Lots of interest in doing that. We saw lots of comments about Ogden Canyon, for instance. And then we were also looking at the OGX station area in station areas along Harrison and Weber State's campus. And just one quick question here, we said, thinking about the needs of Weber State and its students, which approach to the station area makes sense? And really, two-thirds of people said, yeah, that higher intensity, this is a place where it makes sense to have a substantial amount of higher intensity rental housing apartments to make sure that students have a safe and comfortable place to live nearby campus. And then people just be, we try to really get at components of scenarios that people like, but we also understand that people like to chime in on which scenario was their favorite. So we did ask that, and livable communities, that first scenario pops up. And I think that's consistent with what we've been hearing about a desire to make sure kids and grandkids, people new to the city can afford to, to live here. So I'm really interested in creating more ownership options as we also create rental options in places like downtown. So then we took all of this information and a bunch of questions that, that you can look at online if you'd like. And we said, okay, well, what, what components from the scenarios could live in a vision scenario? And a vision scenario is just one possible way a vision could could occur on the ground over time. It's not the way, it's not a zoning map. But in terms of land use, an emphasis on neighborhood infill citywide for homeownership opportunity, convenient neighborhood centers, some mixed centers to add that walkability to goods and services. A downtown's transition area, so you're transitioning from the core to neighborhoods that adds in a lot of housing, whether that's owner occupied, renter occupied, but a nice mix. Transportation, shorter trips, how can we make places closer together or closer to people and more walkable? More neighborhood access to transit and stronger, stronger transit connections to job centers. And then on the jobs front, people really liked that scenario three idea, which had more jobs than any of the other scenarios. So looking at more office employment downtown, more industrial manufacturing, business flex employment in those industrial and manufacturing areas. So that would take a lot of work on the city's part, right? You have to attract those household sustaining jobs. And then open space and recreation, focusing on improving neighborhood parks that, that are existing today, looking at downtown destination and pedestrian spaces, new parks, citywide provided per the city's current level of service goals. And then a trails emphasis citywide and especially connecting out to the region as well. In the OGX area along Harrison and on Weber State, this is where we see most activity, probably on the west side of Harrison, where there's land uses are more likely to change. On the east side, there's a lot of very stable neighborhoods. So we'd see higher intensity residential there, maybe a mixed center with a lot of residential, some commercial in the old hospital area. Maybe it's a good way to house those nursing students nearby a hospital. And then high intensity mixed residential apartments on the corridor. And then as we transition from that corridor to neighborhoods, making sure we do that in a sensitive way. So transitioning down with, with townhomes, small, that's single family, to really soften that and make it feel comfortable for people, whether they're new or whether they've lived there their whole life. And then looking at a complete street in that area, meaning that you can walk on it, you can bike on it, if you feel safe on it. And then looking also at a pedestrian crossing over Harrison to connect that old hospital space with Weber State and make that a more permeable feeling crossing. So that's the nutshell of what we learned and the components that we see to create a vision map. Any questions there or comments? Okay, then I'm gonna move into just a reminder of some value statements. And you probably saw these if you were at the first workshop. We did a bunch of word clouds, what do you like best about Ogden? And you'll see some very common words popping up, diversity, community. What would you like Ogden to be known for? A lot of common words. What's Ogden's greatest opportunity? Growth pops up here. It also pops up as a challenge along with housing and affordability. And then we also polled about, I think it was about 22 statements. And these were the top six. And more than 90% of participants ranked these as important or very important to them. So these are good marching orders, open space, a strong and vibrant downtown, household sustaining jobs, independent businesses, so planning for our city's children, strengthening existing neighborhoods, being climate resilient. And looking at all of that together, the survey results, the vision map, really looking at everything we've learned, this is the draft vision that we're considering at this point. And I'll just go ahead and read it to you. And you can see what you think. So Ogden City, with a stunning mountain backdrop and a downtown renowned as a cultural and entertainment destination, is at heart a place of people committed to caring for one another and the city that we all love. We are a varied group, but we share a common purpose. Together, Ogden City celebrates diversity, progress and possibility, creating space for individuals to feel valued, connected and empowered to reach their fullest potential today and plan so that our children and grandchildren will also thrive as they live, work, learn and play here in the future. And these are the principles. To that end, Ogden City nurtures, grows and strengthens our neighborhoods for the well-being of all residents, supports downtown cultivating cultural, entertainment, business and residential opportunities, enhances centers of business and education for households sustaining jobs, preserves and improves our recreational and natural lands for all to enjoy, provides access to opportunities, providing active transportation and transportation choices, grows responsibly with mindful use of resources, including water, air, energy and public infrastructure. And together, we'll create a community of opportunity, Ogden's Way. So that gets at the implementation piece. So I'll loop back if you'd like. So the whole purpose of this process is to identify and honor and address those values, those big ideas. So we've asked the public so many questions, have them work so hard on maps. And the hope is to yield a vision picture or map that captures their ideas, their hopes for 2050, a vision statement, a set of guiding principles. And it's that, that vision statement and those guiding principles then that will guide the general plan development, they'll open specific chapters of the general plan. It'll become a standard to weigh current decisions against. And it'll be helpful in future years. You can, you can ask all along the way, are we becoming what we said we want to become? So really trying to keep vision grounded in something that's practical and implementable down the road. So as a reminder, where we are in terms of, of the visioning process, we're just in that, that sweet spot, looking at finalizing vision. We're getting a lot of feedback on the vision itself right now. And we'll be finalizing that stuff, working on lots of illustrations, the vision map, all to bring people together at a celebration open house on January 22. And at that open house, we also make a pivot to, hey, let's celebrate what we've, what we've put together as a community. And now let's figure out how we're gonna get it done. And that conversation then pivots to the general plan and different implementation options, policy options. So that is where we are headed. Any questions? Do you want to return to that, that vision slide?
Yeah, Kristi, there were several slides back.
Yeah.
Where the, one of the bottom points that you made, that was the, let's see.
You tell me where to stop.
That one right there.
That one?
Point number six.
Yeah.
Bringing a perspective from business that I'm hearing a lot about, which you probably do here too, particularly from BDO.
Yeah.
Energy is a huge issue. And Rocky Mountain Power is not keeping up with proposed energy requirements.
I've heard that, yeah.
Needing for business development. So we're losing opportunities for new businesses to come into BDO because we can't provide electricity for them. And it's too slow. Lots of reasons why I don't need to go into that right now.
Yeah.
Are you aware of that? Or is the city working with Rocky Mountain Power or?
Yeah, I've heard a few comments about that.
It's a, it's a, it's a big problem. And we're missing out on some economic growth because of that one, that one issue right there.
Okay.
Mostly electricity.
Yeah, that's a good reminder. And that's something that, that will flag as part of the general plan to hit. Are there anything, is there anything you want to speak to in regard to that? Staff, no? Okay.
Yeah. There's a second one, the plan's gonna be about energy.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
I have that question.
Yeah. I think that, I think that was council member hires, Mike, so.
Give it a shot.
So yeah, we may end up having to share that one.
Sure. And I'm just gonna ask, which is because I haven't been through this process before, what if, for example, the conversations with the community would indicate something that's kind of totally against what our strategic plan or what we know is happening in the future? I guess, how do those things get matched up when we come down to actually building the general plan? And I can't think of like a specific example, or something like maybe, what if we didn't want sustainable jobs? I don't know, or something like that. And then that's conflicting, so how does that resolve itself?
Yeah, I, I think that that's always a, a point of conversation, right? Making sure that everybody understands all of the issues, that people are caring one another, the reasons why they think they do. And really, I, I think then re-asking the same questions, maybe a different way and, and seeing if, if we can find some middle ground there. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. But I, from what I'm gathering so far, it's sounding like this is pretty, public comment and sentiment is pretty well-aligned with, with conversations the city is having. Do you feel that way or?
I, I don't know if that question was for me, but and I don't know, I don't know the answer. You need to really exactly, I, I'm a little bit like Councilmember Traburka, that there, there does seem to be some things that are a little bit in conflict in what we've heard. And probably some things that I'm not sure how we solve. I mean, I think everybody wants more neighborhood community services, but we can't even keep the, the, the big services from collapsing. You know, that's, that's being a problem. I mean, I, I think our general plan has to be realistic in, in what we, you know, the direction we're moving forward in. Another thing that I, I kind of think maybe there would be helpful as we get this public input, there's gotta be probably some more foundational aid or some education given. And I mean, you know, our daytime population is, is lots more than our nighttime population.
Yeah.
Because of everybody that works here that doesn't live here.
Yeah.
And so to, to create more jobs, I, I think is, I don't know if it's counterproductive. You know, it's always good to have jobs. And I'm, and I don't want to poo-poo that at all. But, but the housing component, I think, is, is really probably as far as priority goes, is a, is a much bigger one.
I think that's consistent with what we heard.
So, yeah, you know, there's, there's a lot of those kind of things. I think if we, if we make sure that, that those who give input, they're not just pieing the sky in it. They're, they're bringing real things that are, that are generic or that fit Ogden, that, that, you know, from where we are to where we want to go. Not just what we just kind of hope it might be someday if we had a magic wand.
Yeah.
So, and, and that's what I heard, I heard a lot of that in, in this field stuff.
Yeah. So I, I guess one example I could bring to the, the table, if it's helpful. In January, when we pivot to that general plan, that's where the rubber starts hitting the road a little more. And really probing and educating what maybe infill means and looks like or could mean and could look like. And the density in a, in a neighborhood that might be required to support a little neighborhood center. Those have to be right-sized to the surrounding density, right? So looking at those kinds of things with a finer grain and helping people understand that, that there's, there's a relationship to those things. And we have to get those, those relationships right for ideas to work. Yeah. Yeah, does that kind of help? Yeah.
Yeah, it really does. I whenever, you know, in the days I was on the planning commission, the way we would start those conversations is we'd take a lot of census data. And we've talked about income and, and ownership, homeownership and lots of stuff that, that, so that you could educate the, the community that you were kind of working on a
Yeah.
community plan, based on this is where you are. And, and where do you want to go from here?
Yeah.
And I, and I hope we'll, we'll make sure that that step gets.
Yeah, and I, I didn't include that in this presentation, and I should have. That was a part of our first slide deck with the public, so they could understand incomes are lower in Ogden relative to the rest of the state. We're more diverse than a lot of cities in town, in, in the state, just, just those markers. They kind of knew who they were, a little snapshot. So I hope that informed their thinking some. Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Just, just briefly, you might just describe, okay, so the next part of the general plan and what you will do. And yeah, and, and what look, I guess, unless maybe you all have read a few of general plans, but what they all look like at the end.
Sure.
And maybe that will help us from this to.
Yes. Yeah, yes, the next implementation piece. Do you want to take that, Megan? We do kind of baton pass from a staff perspective. You freaked us out.
We're so good on that one.
Good so far. Yeah, so the next steps in the general plan, Kristi put up the vision and the vision principles. So if you can imagine the set of principles really starting to guide goals and policies underneath those. And, and to your comment about, you know, how do you talk to the, to the public about these trade-offs? That's something that will continue that conversation even after the conversation in January to gain sign-off on this, but also identify key actions. And potentially metrics or indicators to be able to track progress, track success of the plan and some of those actions. So the, and then the vision map that goes along with this, I know you haven't seen it quite yet, that will help inform the overall land use map along with some of those actions, implementation actions. So if we're talking about, we talked about.
So if we're talking about, uh, we talked about trailheads today, so that's top of mind for me. Um, if we're talking about where they go, what they look like, that also has to lead into what that policy and what that action is. You know, talk about timeframe, costs, et cetera. Does that help answer that a little bit?
Exciting stuff.
Yeah. Well, thank you for having us. Um, I have enjoyed your public more than I've enjoyed a, a public group for a long time. Your residents care so much about your city. It's really cool to see.
Awesome. Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for being here. All right. Up next, we have, um, a number of presenters regarding proposed fiscal year 2024, 2025 fee amendments. And up first, we'll invite Deputy Chief Ziegler to, uh, address us on the police department. The amendments. Yeah.
Is there a presentation on this or?
That's fine down there. Yeah. If you need a control of presentation, this is where you do it, but.
Well, good afternoon, Council. Thank you, uh, for having me. I'm here on behalf of the Ogden Police Department to discuss some amendment proposals to our current fee schedule. These were proposals that were, uh, drafted based on some outdated fees that are no longer relevant, uh, to our department or our services and adding new fees to, to reflect recently introduced services. And so I'll, I don't know if you have access to the same document that I'm looking at, but on page eight of the transmittal document is where I'll be referencing. The first proposed amendment comes, uh, is relative, related to our crime.
Uh, Deputy Chief, we're going to just put that transmittal page up on the screen for anyone watching at home. So go, you can go ahead and continue. Just, just for those online, it'll, it'll show up here shortly, hopefully.
Okay, great. So the first fee that we are recommending, omitting from the future version of our fee schedule is the crime scene photos. Uh, we had traditionally, uh, charged for the production of crime scene photos. We no longer need to charge for that service as those are delivered digitally. The, uh, you'll notice that there is a recommendation for, um, adding some language under our fingerprint section just to represent, um, our live scan. Traditionally, we've had just cards as an option, but we now have, um, the live scan technology that digitally captures and reproduces our fingerprint impressions. And so that will just be some language added to for clarity. Also, uh, additional language for clarity, uh, our current fee schedule just specifies police reports as, um, a report that can be generated for a $25 fee. We'd like to add also the word accident, um, to that line to, uh, to remove some of the confusion that we've had, uh, the differentiating between, between police and accident reports. It will be the same fee.
Is that a fee we already charge? It's just helping to clarify.
Yes.
People come in, they're like, I, I was in an accident. Is that what you're?
Correct. Yes. It's always been, um.
We've always charged.
Yes.
Okay.
We're also recommending the inclusion of a driver exchange form on a not, non-reportable accident. Just some of the language changed there. Um, this is something that we've also always charged. But the, the language will, will differentiate between full accident reports and just copies of driver exchange forms. You'll notice, uh, just below that, we are recommending or proposing the removal of photographs for licenses. That was something that we have charged for in the past, but no longer is necessary. And I'll get to why that's important in a minute. We are also recommending the removal of the fee for landlord training program. That is a training, uh, service and program that we no longer offer. And then on the solicitor background check and the solicitor badge, this is traditionally where we would have a photograph for our solicitor licenses. We are charging, that is just now included in the solicit, solicitor badge line item for $10 along with the solicitor background check for $10 as well. So these proposed, oh, and then finally, um, we would like to have removed our towing rotation fees, both for the application and the renewal. This is no longer, we no longer have a rotation. Um, and so those are no longer applicable to us. And these recommendations will have, um, no additional cost anticipated, um, for any of the recommendations that have, I've discussed.
Help me. What's a solicitor?
So this is, these are the business solicitations. Um, so your door to door salesman soliciting licenses. There's some other categories as well.
Okay, thank you. And I just had a question about the towing rotation. How are you handling that now?
So we've gone to a, a model where we have one company that was obtained through a sole source. Requisition and they do all of our towing now, uh, for the entire police department.
And the contract arrangement?
Yes.
And just, uh, to complete the, uh, the list, landlord training program, what's going on with that?
We don't, we no longer offer that training and I don't, I'm not sure if the city officer, if the city is offering any of that training, but we, we.
So that's the good landlord program that used to be, that used to be the thing? Is that, is that what we're talking about?
This is not the good landlord program. This is just a landlord training program that we used to put on.
But that was required for the good landlord program, if I remember right. Yeah, there was some training that you had to do every two years in order to qualify for the good landlord program.
Welcome.
Thank you. I can just clarify that really quickly. Um, it's been taken over by the Utah Apartment Association for a number of years. So we, we used to be the coordinating, um, host of that training.
Okay.
But now it's, it's taken over and it, it may be completely online as well. Occasionally I see there might be an in-person event here, but, um, we haven't, we haven't actually done the training ourselves for five or more years.
So the city does still participate in the landlord program. We just don't provide any of the training.
Exactly. So it's just been, um, so that requirement is just being met by an outside entity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? So I don't know, Chief, if this is, I, I, I don't think this necessarily applies to, uh, the, the police department specifically. We had a, um, resident reach out regarding a parking ticket and then some late fees and, and, um, some issues related to that. Do, does the police department? Is that related to the police department's collection of fees or is that more internal city? I don't know if Mary, you might know on that.
Were you asking about towing?
Not towing. So, so a parking ticket that, that became, was unpaid. And then there was a late, there was a late fee assessed because it wasn't paid in time. And then missed the appeal process. And so just, just an, just an area that maybe, I don't know if we need to review that whole process. But I, again, I don't know if it relates specifically to the police department or not. Yeah.
Well, the, um, I could just real, real quick respond that the, the revenue itself is, it goes to the general fund and it'll go back to the police department. But after the, after it's, there's been a citation or a ticket issued, it comes over onto the civil side, basically where we have a parking, um, you know, into our parking group, you know, with, with collections. Um, and so they usually will, will, it, it's actually kind of a more of a online system right now. But, um, we're happy to review those fees and discuss the whole program with you. And, uh, at any time we can, we can come back and, and really go over that program in a work session if you'd like.
So it sounds like it, it is definitely separate from, from the.
Yeah. After, after the, there's been a, a citation or a ticket issued, it, it kind of comes over. So we can talk about that.
Yeah. That'd be great if we can review that.
Sure.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Deputy Chief Ziegler. And congratulations again on, on your new position. Um, up next, we have Vincent Ramos, uh, Public Works Operations Director to talk about, uh, Public Services Department Utilities. And Justin is here with us with a festive tie.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. We'd like to welcome Vince up as our, uh, within Public Services. He is the Public Works Director. And he is over one of, some of his responsibilities include refuse, meaning our garbage and our recyclables. And also he's over the green waste facility too. So he has a couple of items to present.
Hey. I'm not sure if you guys can see the transmittal on the screen.
What, what pager would, would you want him to navigate to? Is there a specific page on that or?
Not sure which page it is. Should be for recycling.
For recycling.
There we go. Okay. So two items I wanted to start first with, uh, recycling and apologize. I should have done this, uh, a lot sooner. We wanted to, uh, do an amendment to the ordinance to add an additional recycling cart. And so the way it was written prior to, in order to get an additional recycling cart, a resident had to, pay for a, an additional garbage can, then they would get an additional recycling cart. Okay? And it, a lot of people opted out of that. They didn't want the additional garbage can. So by doing it this way, we wanted to add the additional recycling cart. It'll be the same price as if they were to get a, an additional garbage cart. And, um, then they wouldn't have to get that extra cart. We would do it all the same, same with a, um, if they were to pay for an additional, it would be the same price as a garbage cart as well. And so that's the first one we wanted to do. We don't get a lot of requests for this, but the few that we do, this will make it simple for those residents that, that want to purchase one. So pretty, pretty simple and basic on that one. Great. Any questions?
Vince, is this just a one-time fee?
Yeah, this will be a, a, the fee for a monthly fee, just like the garbage cart.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But one thing I wanted to add as well is this is, recycling is an incentive. Okay? So they do have a three-strike rule. So the difference on this additional cart is if they weren't meeting the requirements of recycling, we could pull that cart. We would warn them. We would talk to the residents. We offer, uh, classes where they could teach them recycling, the proper way to do it and things like that. Prior to the third strike, but we do want to make that aware that if they do get this recycling cart, we can pull it if they're not meeting our requirements.
So it's $26.72 or $31.83 to deliver it is proposed. And then for a 96 gallon cart, um, 2227 a month.
Yeah. So the, as, as far as the delivered one, I was kind of speaking, talking about this. On this one, it wasn't to deliver it on a first time basis. That's all free. We have some residents who would, um, request like a recycling cart or a garbage cart just for like a special event that they have going on. Then they want to turn it in a month later and then it, it costs us to go out there and pick it up, put it in the system. So that cost would just be for things like that. They'd have to keep it for so many months. And then we would charge them to go pick it up and put it all back in the system, things like that. So that's all that fee is for. It's not to initially drop it off.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for doing this. It's nice to have the flexibility of adding a cart at least one constituent in my neighborhood will be very appreciative of this. So thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions? I don't think so. Okay, then I'll move on to the second one. And this is another one I think that our residents were like. We wanted to add, um, tailings uh, to our green waste materials. And so what tailings are, it's crushed asphalt that we get. And I don't know if you can see the pictures in here. And we get quite a bit of it. So we store it, we, we use it for, you know, our road doing a road work on the shouldering roads, things like that, um, pathways, uh, parking lots. And we actually get quite a lot of requests for, for tailings. And so for us to haul the tailings now, it costs us money to haul it, you know, with equipment and labor and all that. It, they don't charge us to, to haul it away, but it's just the cost to haul it away. So this way, we thought if we could store this at the green waste site as well, we want to add it as $5 per yard. So it's not very expensive. And this way with a lot of residents that, uh, call in, they can, or, or want it, they can, um, come and pick up tailings and it wouldn't charge us, it wouldn't cost us to haul it away. So it would help our residents, you know, with these tailings. So, yeah.
That's from, uh, the rotor mill?
The rotor mill.
Okay, that's where that's coming from?
Mm-hmm. So as, as we're grinding down that road or we're going down two inches, you know, so we can repave it. It's all the, the excess that comes off of that. And then we haul it, we store it there at our yard. We use it when we shoulder roads, things like that. It's, it's used.
I thought that stuff was like gold.
Yeah, we have quite a bit. Yeah, a lot of people call. They like it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So are we storing at the green waste, all of the rotor mill material that is coming off our city streets?
No, we have a pile there, some of it. And we have a lot of it at our yard that we keep there for projects that we have going on. The rest, we haul it away as waste.
Okay. Is there any way to recycle that rather than wasting it? I, I noticed the funniest things on my life rolling down the road. You know, I was amazed at a rotor mill machine. And and then I saw one where they're taking the asphalt up off the road and they're putting it into another machine. And it's dumping into a paver and the stuff that just got pulled off the road is now being paved on the road. Is there a market for this outside of just dumping it? Because we see it being reused.
I've looked at, um, things like that, demonstrations, but nothing that I've seen like what you're saying to reuse it right there on the spot.
Yeah. So cutler paving actually has a process where they, they do that. They take it up, except they can't use all of it that they take up. They can only mix a portion. And then you can also mix sometime, a, a portion of that with some of the road base and still meet all the required specs that you need to be able to compact and do everything else. So, um, there is a, a way of, of using some of that. Uh, but some of the best ways is to reuse it. Uh, as Vince has said, for like putting it on roadways for shouldering, it, it compacts well, it holds tight. It's a pretty durable type material, um, as well, especially for roads that are typically native or they, they've never been asphalted before, but they, they packed in and hold tight to, to native material.
Yeah. My only, the only reason I inquired was if there's something being dumped somewhere and, and buried. I just wondered if there was a, a place where it could be taken and reused rather than cost. I, I really appreciate the city using it for shouldering and for pathways and that sort of thing. It makes a lot of sense. But I wonder if there isn't something we can do to, um, give it another life, um, so to speak, rather than just burying it. That was my only question.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask. Will this have any negative impact on the green waste? I mean, does it take up space that we could be, I mean, cause the greenway site isn't, I mean, it's, when I go, it's always full, right? There's always something there. Are we taking space from something else? And will, I mean, is, well, is it gonna make it busier, make it harder for residents to get in and out of the, I don't know.
No. So when you go into the, where the shack is, if you go to the right, there's a, a little road that goes up the hill. And up on top of that hill, it's all flat, we leveled that. That's where a portion of the tailings will be maintained.
Okay.
And so are stored. So the majority is not there. The majority will be at our shop. But as that, you know, kind of dwindles down, if people are, are purchasing it, then we can restock it there. And it doesn't affect our green waste, uh, area at all.
The first I'm hearing about tailings. So help me out here. Is there a tailings season? I mean, like the green waste has kind of a season, right? Is there a tailing season? Is this busier?
Well.
One time or the other?
Well, tailings, when we asphalt, the season to asphalt is between around April 15th, November 15th. Okay. And, but of course our street department does so many other projects, just not just the roads. But that's when we will stock it. But we will be able to sell this. It'll be in storage all year long.
Okay.
So they can.
I assume that's, it seems to be most of summer.
And I don't know, like, as far as the demand of when that might be. Um, so this is kind of. And I don't know, like, as far as the demand of when that might be, so this is kind of new to us selling it, but I think it's a service that, like Vince said, we have plenty of the material, we get requests for it. And again, we're not going to store the majority of it at the green waste, that's going to be at a different site. But we'll keep some up at the green waste so that we can service other requests as they come in.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, so that is kind of the recycle use is just offering it to residents and they're going to be, residents can use it for landscaping or pathways, I mean, what, what a.
Yeah, it, it does, if you tap it down, it does pack in pretty tight and yeah, it, it's good, especially if you need to build something on top of it that works out pretty well.
So you're escaping their lawns and tailings?
Well, yeah, I, if, if it, if any flags go up where people are pulling their turf out and covering their lawns with this, I think we might want to pause and consider it, you know, this shouldn't be part of the flip the script program.
That is, that's not our intent to, to do that as to, as part of the, but a lot of people do have maybe spots that they either have some depressions or something and, and they have things where they park on, on top of their backyard or something that, that they, they need a little pad to, this will hold well, it'll also, you know, keep weeds down and stuff like that.
RV pad, I think it'd be great, you know, or, you know, vehicle pad like that, but as soon as we see it replacing somebody's front lawn, maybe we ought to.
Similar to they would get code violated if they didn't give a permit, just like with the rocks.
Right, yeah.
And I don't think this meets, like, I think they have to meet a certain material type to, to be able to do that. And this, we're not expecting that, yeah, this does not meet that.
Perfect. All right, any other questions? Good? Okay, we'll invite Monte Stewart up from the Park Cemetery and Trail Director to talk about fees for the cemetery.
Yeah, while Monty comes up, he's definitely more known for parks and trails, but Monty is also the city sexton responsible for the cemetery here at, in Ogden City. So, and this is, he's got a fee request to update for our cemetery.
Excuse me, I kind of lost my voice a little bit, but yeah, so it, you know, I, I don't know. It's been pulled up, thank you. So it's been about five years since we've adjusted fees in the cemetery. We look to do those every three to five, a couple of years ago when we looked at the market of in northern Utah of municipal cemeteries, we still, some of the others hadn't made adjustments and so we kind of held off for a minute. So it's always been our goal to really kind of hold the middle ground and fee structure and offer value to our, our residents and, and to our customers. But with this last market study, we found that we really have fallen, you know, in the bottom bracket of of fees when we look at the other municipalities. And I, I know in in the information that, that you all have received, we looked at, you know, municipal cemeteries from Saint George all the way to Logan, but then when, although we look at those and take those into consideration, we really are comparing ourselves against Logan, Brigham, Bountiful and Kaysville, tho- those are the ones in northern Utah that we really, that we really look at. So in, in doing so, like I said, we found our, that we've really fallen in that bottom bracket, and so we're looking to adjust those fees to to make up some of that, the, the cost of doing business, as everybody knows, has really skyrocketed over the last few years. Our the amount of money that we have to spend for seasonal labor has also really gone up, as everybody knows. So, you know, our, for grave spaces for residents, we've, we're proposing eight hundred, non-resident fifteen, fifteen hundred, entirement, seven fifty, twelve fifty for non-resident, these are really pretty average to slightly below the average of the, of the other cities that we looked at to still try to offer value. Currently, we, on average, sell about seventy new spaces each year. The total, and two hundred and fifteen burials is what we average over a three-year period we looked at. Fiscal impact are estimated at fourteen thousand for an increase for lot sales, fifty-three thousand, seven fifty for burials. These, we, we did figure these conservatively and, and looked at everybody as a resident. It varies from year to year, but it's about one-third a little bit below that of our total sales and enterments are non-resident. So the fiscal impact to the city will be a little bit greater than, than what's shown here, but we, we showed the conservative number. And then also with this inspection fees, estimated revenue of thirty-five hundred and and then overtime, we do a lot of overtime weekend burials. Not so much overtime during the week, we do have fees in here to increase that, but most weekend, or weekday burials, people aren't looking to start after four PM, right? So mo- most of the overtime fees that will be impacted are on the weekends. All right. So, yeah, I don't know. Straightforward.
Yeah, I remember when we did this the last time, but I can't remember how many spots we have left.
Um, well, I don't have, you know, there's about fifty-five thousand burials in the cemetery, we don't, I, I couldn't give you a number on the exact number of spots, but we, we figure we're, you know, I think last time we figured like seventeen years, we, we had left and, and we're about fourteen now, you know? So we are doing some things, like I, I spoke a couple of weeks ago about the columbarium. We are looking to do some things to extend the, the, the current life of the cemetery within the footprint that we have. And some of those, you, you know, and Councilman Myers well knows that there's been a shift percentage-wise nationwide and also in Utah towards cremation barriers. And so that allows us to do more burials in the space that we have. Currently, we, we do two, you know, we'll do two cremation burials in a, in a, in a spot. There's really probably going forward some room to look at, to look at that and adjust.
So how will the cemetery pay for itself in fourteen years when we have no grave spaces or burial?
How will we pay? How will we?
Maintain it.
Oh, you, you know, I think there's options to increase some areas, there are areas around the cemetery, you know, there's some city-owned ground to the, to the west where the old nursery, I don't know if people remember the old nursery. You know, there's some, you know, some space there. There's also, you know, we're looking at space right now for columbarium, but also for cremane gardens. And, and there's some areas within the current footprint that we can still, still gain more space. Along Gold Star Avenue, the GIS department has been working with us and plotting out some areas that haven't been plotted before, where there used to be a sidewalk here or a road here, so there are some that we can.
I guess my question is just higher level than that, and that is, what, once it's full, what, what happens? I don't know, I don't know the answer.
I, I think what, if I can just add that. You know, I, I wonder if, you know, when people pay this fee, if there's some portion of it that goes to a kind of an endowment that will.
There, there is, into perpetual, into perpetual care, so the percentage of every loss.
Curious.
And, and I believe with that, there's no requirement to keep a certain balance, so you could appropriate it as you wanted. Currently, the fees that are recognized in the general fund for cemetery are less than about eighty-five thousand. So, so taxpayer money is covering a lot of the cemetery operations. Also, buy yours now, I mean, can you buy your plot early?
Yes, yeah. Buy, buy it now before January one.
So if I may.
Yeah.
I've, I had the privilege of reviewing this with Monty and I think the, just from my perspective, I think the research that they've done on this is outstanding. And they've done a lot deeper dive into fees and costs than, than what is a common business practice. Some of the challenges that they have is that Ogden City, through our taxes, supports the cemetery. And that's why you see such a discrepancy between the resident fees and the non-resident fees, because non-resident fees don't pay any of that perpetual care fee fund, nor do non-residents pay into the general fund, which helps to cover some of the cemetery costs. So I think this is a, a benefit that we're providing to our residents in the way that Monty has set that forward. So having a perfect knowledge of what it costs to do a burial, because I own a cemetery, I would agree with the assessment that Monty made, is that our costs for residents are below what actual costs are to provide that service. And I think that balances out because they live in the cemetery district and they're paying taxes and they contribute to the, the care of the cemetery. So that's a prudent option. But to ask your question, what do we do at the cemetery when it's over and done with? Is a national issue throughout the United States because we do not recycle burial sites, which is very common in Europe, that it's not anything that we do in our area. So it's a challenging issue that's coming forward, but I think Ogden has that addressed in that the cemetery is part of a municipal tax district. And so they've already, they've already committed that they're going to care for that cemetery. So I want to amplify on a thought that Monty shared and just maybe bring it to a little wider perspective, and that is that cemeteries today are not so much about the, they're not so much worried about the ground that they use because the common tendency right now is that they go up instead of down. So he mentioned columbariums and that's a niche. The columbarium houses a number of niches and niches are where cremated remains are placed in an upright kind of a, it's a columbarium. Some people call it a mausoleum, but a mausoleum is actually for a full burial and a niche is for a cremated remains burial, does that make sense? So they've already taken into account that that is a proposal that's coming forward through Business Depot Ogden's funds. And I don't know if that purchase has been made, but it's been approved.
Yeah, the, the council approves CIP funds this last year, and so we've been meeting with some designers and looking at different options.
So those are some things that they're doing also to extend the life of the cemetery. That probably doesn't come to mind unless you take a deep dive into it. So I, I think they're being prudent, the city is, in these fees. And I would make that observation that their prices are meeting about what the demand is and costs today for non-residents and for residents offering a better value. But I support the, the effort and time that you've put in, I mean, it's.
Well, thank you, you are a, a wonderful resource.
Small part of it.
Thank you. All right. We'll invite Todd Brinkman, our, our golf pro, to come up and talk about golf fees.
All right, we appreciate Todd coming here and he's got some fees to talk about, I think specifically concerning cart fees.
Yes, Chair Richie, Vice Chair White, council members, nice to be with you. Just wrapping up another incredible season of growth in golf, which continues to trend up, which we love. And historically, just a quick little background, normally golf fees are done on an every-year type of basis as we look at the cost of operating the business. The marketplace kind of surged ahead of our normal fee schedule and a lot of facilities, especially up north of us in the Cache Valley, as we've done a pretty extensive market study from north to south. So we're playing catch-up just a little bit, but what we bring to you this afternoon just primarily has to deal with raising the cart fees, a dollar per nine. We've always been committed to providing quality golf carts. You got to enjoy them in the parade there. We brought sixty-two brand-new ones in this year and the lease, effectively, golf carts became like vehicles during COVID and the, the price skyrocketed, almost doubled on the lease rate. So the proposal is to adjust the cart fee, a dollar per nine, two dollars per eighteen, that would affect a couple of eighteen-hole discount rates that we've historically done Monday through Thursday, because the discount was figured on the cart rate, so that will adjust, but we're still at or below market there. And then one little adjustment, just a dollar per bucket on range balls. If any of you practice at El Monte, we provide fantastic practice balls. I spent my whole youth hand-striping golf balls with lacquer paint. And I've probably lost a few more brain cells than I'd care to admit with that process. So once I took responsibility for managing the golf courses, I swore we would stop that practice. But the other thing that will go up, just one punch pass rate will adjust up by twenty dollars because that punch passes twenty rounds of golf with the cart. And I would just kind of like to highlight, all green fees stay the same. One little adjustment to the El Monte rate, we always offer a win discount if you play El Monte in the mornings before nine AM when it's a little scottish out there. We still think that brings a great value and those people that play all the time, I've already run up by them, how would you feel? And they said, we can't believe it's been this cheap for this long. So that, the, the players still get tremendous value there. All of our season passes stay the same, all of our punch tickets stay the same for now, which against the rest of the market puts us at a greater value. And one thing I would just like to add, the key to rate increases is you've got to be reinvested in the property. As long as people see you turning a shovel and making improvements, I've been doing this a long time, historically, they tolerate fee increases because they see that the money's going back in the golf course and like no other time in our history are we doing that. With the completion of the El Monte irrigation system being state-of-the-art now, we've completed phase one and two at Mount Ogden, which sounds huge when I say phase one and two, but basically three holes. We completed that this fall. Put the new driving range fence in at El Monte this fall, which is a tremendous improvement. All the new landscaping around El Monte, so the customers, like no other year in my career, have just said, wow, it's neat to see the city investing in golf. And this helps that.
And the deck was also.
And the El Monte deck, don't let me forget one of the things I'm most proud of. People have really enjoyed that, and it's driven food sales.
Councilmember higher. Yeah, I, I've got to say, that has been really nice, as I, that's where I primarily golf, is El Monte, it's close and I don't lose too many balls there, so I really appreciate that. Is there plans to exhume the fragmities out of the ponds soon or?
Yes, with the help of the Ogden Fire Department, they will come in again this spring during burn season and help us. We made a great attempt last year, the problem was not even the fire department could get it to ignite. So when, I mean, we've got all their expertise out there and they couldn't get it to burn either. So yes, we will continue to chip away at that. The crazy thing about that is we can go in there and knock it out in one season, hand-cutting it out, digging it out. And literally by the end of the season, it's, it's coming back again. But yes, we do have a plan this spring.
I know a couple Boy Scouts who might be able to help light stuff on fire.
Nice.
Todd, I, I know at El Monte it's nine, but at Mount Ogden, do you know the percentage of who buys nine hole rounds and who plays eighteen-hole rounds? Like, what's the?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's kind of, it, it's interesting in Utah golf, we're, we're one of the only areas in the nation that tracks rounds played by nine-hole rounds, because back on the east coast, if you say nine-hole round, they don't even know what you're talking about. So historically, the nine versus eighteen at Mount Ogden was kind of, you know, sixty, forty, eighteen. It's growing now. I mean, on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we will sell out every eighteen-hole opportunity between six AM and eleven AM, which we have not done that in twenty years.
Okay.
So it's, eighteen-hole play is growing.
Nice. Is there, can I just ask another question?
Please.
Was there any thought given, I know in every other, I think, business aspect, right, you pay more for the first one and then the second one's kind of like it. in every other, I think, business aspect, right, you pay more for the first one, and then the second one's kind of like at a discount. So is there any thought of like, it's twelve dollars for a cart for nine holes and then twenty for eighteen, like some type of discount, or just keep it ten, ten?
Yeah, we, we've looked into that, and you don't really see that too. In the market study, we didn't see that, but I look at every possible option and, and, and this fee was basically driven by a cost of operating, but I don't, I don't see anybody discounting cart rates anymore because they've gone up so much in price.
Okay.
Good question, though.
So Todd, with, it sounds like our, um, rounds have grown, okay, year over year, um, and in consecutive years as well?
Yes.
Okay, so without raising green fees, are we leaving something on the table? I know this is a big puzzle that you lay out in front of yourself, and you play this game around pricing, and you can't do it without considering surrounding pricing as well. But with increased play, is there also an opportunity for a green fees price advan- uh, advancement?
Thank you for asking that, and I'll be back here again next year to do that, what we've tried to do. So with this, um, proposal in front of you, this would get the peak rate for eighteen holes Friday through Sunday up to fifty-four dollars. By comparison, Smithfield's already at fifty-eight, and Logan is at fifty-six. So we are behind a little bit. I just did, I don't ever like the idea coming in with a four to five-dollar jump in an eighteen-hole round. And because so many places did that during COVID, and we were a little slow to catch up, I'd prefer to just sneak up on it just a little bit. So next year, we would look to adjust the general green fee a little bit, slowly eking up to the market. So yes, is there, would there be an opportunity right now we could capitalize on? Absolutely, but I think we've got to kind of take that same conservative step we've been doing the last few years.
Yeah, it's, it's tough when you've been discovered by the golf community again.
Yes.
To run the risk of.
Exactly, and.
Case in a backup.
Yeah, because the locals here, they're like, wow, it's getting expensive to play golf. When people come in from out of state, they can't throw money at you fast enough, because they're like, man, this is a steal. People that come to Mount Ogden that have never been there, that don't have the scary conceived idea that it eats too many golf balls, they're like, this golf course ought to cost a hundred dollars. And I says, thank you, can we record that? But yes, so we'll, we'll be back again next year to make an incremental adjustment to get us up to where we probably should be.
Yeah.
Conceivably experiential, for me, it's experiential. Yeah. They sell them.
Well, I was gonna say, Rich, you could take a lesson.
We're continuing, yeah, and we're continuing to make improvements, you know, we've stockpiled a little bit of material on that site, and it's Justin and I's intention to continue to widen the play areas up there, so we aren't losing so many golf balls.
Great, that's great. Alright, any other question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we, we, we're looking to break at five fifteen. Um, I don't know, do we have enough time to start this one, Jenny, do you think, or should we?
I guess that's up to you. Um, I could probably do it in ten minutes, seven minutes. So that still gave you time to get out there at five-thirty, but you also could, um, we do have to have it on the agenda for December seventeenth. We could move it to, um, to the work session tomorrow, but we have got to notice it. The other option would be to push it to the end of the meeting.
Thoughts? Let's do it. Okay, let's go. And then if we, because we, yeah, with the ribbon cutting or the presentation's at five-thirty, so at, uh, five-twenty-five, we'll stop, and if we are not done, we'll see what our next option is.
I will talk quickly and then hopefully, um, answer questions and we'll, we'll go as quick as we can, so. Thank you, Chair, thank you, Council. Um, so the proposal for you tonight is to make some adjustments to our ARPA budget, um, the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, these were funds that were given to the city, uh, back in twenty-twenty-one, um, that can be used for a very various purposes. This was, uh, uh, a bill signed by Congress, and then they allocated those funds out based on population to cities. Um, and we were able to allocate up to ten million of that, of those funds to go towards, um, operational costs due to the lost revenue. But we were, we were given a total of, um, just over twenty-five million, it's twenty-five million, six hundred and twelve thousand. Um, in looking, and then the, the two stipulations with these funds is they have to be obligated or encumbered by the end of this month. Um, and they must be expended by the end of December in twenty-twenty-six. So we are up against the obligated, um, portion of this requirement. And so with that, there are some proposals that we want to make, um, so that we can make sure to get the funds that are fully obligated or spent by the end of December. The, on the right side there, you'll see how the original appropriations were made, um, from, um, working with administration and council. Um, we originally appropriated funds for, um, radio replacement of public safety, um, a handful of community grants that were given out. Funds to help with community cleanup, uh, funds towards the Marshall White Center construction, uh, twelve million dollars for the water line that's in process. Seventy thousand dollars for, um, some netting at Fourth Street, and then the rest of that was going to be used for general governmental expenditures. There we go. Uh, the status of each of those, um, on the public safety radio replacement, there's a hundred and fifty-two thousand that is still left in those funds that will not be spent by the end of the year. So, and I'll talk a bit more about what the proposal is. The community grants is fully expended, all those funds have been spent, um, or given out. Uh, the community cleanup, it is either fully encumbered or fully ex- or expended at this point, so there's no concern on those funds. Uh, the Marshall White, that one-point-four million has been spent, um, so there's no, um, issue there. The canyon water line, um, is now fully encumbered, that twelve million dollars, so we have, we'll meet that obligation. And then the Fourth Street netting, that is one that with the, with the public services and they're looking at that, the ballpark and that whole area, they had put this on hold, and by the time we got to looking at going out to bid to try to get, um, an encumbrance in place by the end of the year, we just, timing-wise, we won't have it ready, and also it looks like with the bidding, it's going to be less than the seventy thousand, and so we wanted to, uh, make an adjustment to that so that we can, would, um, still use the money, use funds for that, but we can, um, not miss out on losing that seventy thousand dollars. So the appropriation, what we're proposing, um, in prior years, out of the general governmental portion, we had already spent some of those funds. And so we wanted to have the full amount available for council's consideration and, and, and where to appropriate those. And so that savings that we, that we experienced, um, we used to purchase a vehicle, some expenses related to, um, trees, tree removal, and a couple other items resulted in about two-hundred thousand dollars in spending, and so we're proposing to use a, use fund balance in the general fund, and then to transfer that to the C I P fund. That's a portion of what this budget opening does. Um, the rest, I'm trying to think of the easiest way to explain this. Um, where, what we're doing is, since we can use up to ten million dollars for general governmental expenditures, which includes wages, what we're proposing to do is to use public safety wages, fire and police wages, for the first six months of this fiscal year, so from July to December, that will fully use up the governmental expenditure portion of this bucket of money that we have. And if we do that, because we would not use those monies in the general fund that's been budgeted, the proposal would be to take that savings from the general fund and transfer that to the C I P fund, and then, um, and I'll talk about what those, those funds will go towards. But that way, it, it takes away the timing of having to have these funds obligated by the end of the year. We can spend them because we can spend them towards wages. Um, and so the amount that would be coming out of police would be just over six million dollars, um, and the amount out of fire is just, is just under three million dollars. Um, the other two items that you can see there, the, the Fourth Street net, so a- again, we can, because we can spend up to ten million on general governmental expenditures, we want to use that seventy thousand towards the wages, which will then create savings in the general fund that we're, we're proposing to transfer to the C I P fund. And then the hundred and, or the two-hundred thousand dollars that was not spent on the radio replacement, again, we want to use that excess for public safety wages, those savings we want to move to, um, the fleet and facilities fund, as they are implementing these new radios and rolling them out, there's still going to be ongoing expense with, um, batteries and, and other expenditures. And so we want to set that money aside, but that way it doesn't have to be encumbered by the end of December. So the impact in the general fund is an increase of two-hundred and two thousand, which is mainly the appropriation of the use of fund balance. Um, the other items on, is reducing wages and then tra- and then proposing to transfer those out of the general fund. In the C I P fund, so this is where a majority of that budget, those budget transfers will go to. The, the proposal for you tonight, and, and in the packet, there's some more information, because I know there, there was a presentation given on, uh, proposed use, um, from council on these funds and what we could use this nine million dollars towards. Um, I just wanted to provide a little information that I had on those, and I know we're short on time, so I'm trying to talk as quickly as I can, I apologize. In regards to, to, to Lauren Farr, I know that was discussed, um, as a use for some of these funds. Um, over the last few years, the city has invested just under half a million dollars, um, in improvements to Lauren Farr. I just wanted to, um, to let council know that we have, there has been a significant investment in continuing to keep the pool operating. Um, and that, a lot of those funds came from B D O lease revenue. Um, and so, and then the other request was to put funds towards Lester Park. And so in this appropriation, we're propos- administration is proposing to transfer, um, just over a million to the Lester Park C I P. If you take that, those funds along with other funds that have already been appropriated for Lester Park, as well as some pending ramp that, um, our public service group is looking to apply for this coming January, if those are awarded, uh, we would have upwards of two-point-four million dollars, um, for Lester Park, between the million dollars and then some of these other opportunities that we're, we're searching for. Um, the other appropriations would go at two-and-a-half million towards Union Station, um, towards that development. Um, there's not a specific use of that yet, but you, um, to set that money aside for that development and, um, the future use of, uh, future of Union Station. Um, the other five million would go towards the purchase of the jail, um, here on, on our municipal block. There's an opportunity to purchase the, the building in the county, and so we're posing half a million dollars for that. There's also a proposal for an all-abilities park, um, that we, five million, sorry. And then there's a proposal for an all-abilities park that we'd like to appropriate five-hundred thousand towards that, and then the million for Lester Park. And then the seventy thousand that we would have used for the net in ARPA, appropriating that to a recreation C I P to still use for Fourth Street netting. So the total increase to the C I P fund is just over nine-point-one million. And then in the fleet and facilities fund would be to recognize the hundred and fifty-two thousand that was not spent on the radios, putting that in our fleet and facilities fund to hold there to be able to purchase additional batteries, um, any other expenses related to that implementation. And then this is the impact in our miscellaneous grants fund. Um, so again, it would be to adjust around those funds from, um, the Fourth Street net, the public safety radios, and then the governmental operation expenditures and, and assigning it saying we're using it for police and fire wages. The total amount, just so you know, is, is, in the end, we would end up putting six-point-one million towards police wages and two-point-nine towards, um, fire wages. So the total appropriation for your consideration is eighteen million, five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, eight-fifty. And this is the summary just of with, if you adopt this ordinance, um, how the buckets of money will end up being placed that we received from ARPA, we would end up spending the one-point-three towards the radios, uh, the grants wouldn't have changed, the community cleanup wouldn't change, the Marshall White wouldn't change, and the canyon water line wouldn't change, but then the general governmental operation expenditures with total, uh, nine million, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand.
Okay, I don't know that we have time to really dive into discussion at this moment, so either we hold over and finish this after our council meeting, depending on how late we go tonight, or we can continue this in the work session next week. So at this point, I think we need to adjourn.
Thank you for that. I, I just, I, I lament the idea that we would rush through nine million dollars worth of budget opening and appropriation, because we've got to get outside for, in a, in events. So, thank you very much for that. I'm more invested in my proposal around the park than, i- i- and, and I'd like to be able to express that, so thank you for that, Chair, I appreciate it.
Alright, we are adjourned.